I'll call it 6:32. I'll call the public hearing to order. It's a public hearing for subdivision for, we're calling it 2024-03, a minor subdivision, proposed by property owners Keith Cole, Dawson Cole, Ron Cole, for property location 840 Polo with a division of a 43-acre lot. That's the original size?
Yeah.
Original?
Forty-three, forty-four, yeah.
Yeah, forty-three, approximately plus or minus forty-three acre lot into three lots. Twenty-one plus or minus acres, twenty plus or minus acres, and 1.5 plus or minus acres. We have in attendance on Zoom Hunter Cole. Is that right? Hi Hunter. In person.
Harrison.
Would you mind introducing yourselves?
Oh, Keith Cole.
Keith?
Dawn.
Hi Keith and Dawn. So we have here an updated plat. Let's just go back through our minutes and just see what we asked for, for the revisions, because I'm not fresh on it. That was in December. Let's see here, we asked for an updated mylar with a signature from the surveyor. Looks like we have it. E911, property numbers, property address.
Do you see them in the description there?
Is it in the description as well? I see them here.
It's right here. I just found them. Right there is 840, 726.
Okay.
And 750.
Okay, and those have already been assigned?
Yes.
Yep, okay. The proposed wastewater system is, looks like it's on there. I see septic tank mound area, and I see proposed two-bedroom residence. Those are the things we asked for, I believe. Is that correct? That's right, yep.
Yeah, they're, yes.
I think that's, that's the extent of the changes we repressed then.
Yeah.
Does everybody agree it's, it meets our request? Have you seen it?
Mm-hmm.
You agree? Okay.
Yeah.
Andy? Peter, are we up, got a little situation here, or do we lose any?
I didn't.
We lost the system.
They are there. I see them here.
Oh, they're back.
Yeah.
I think this being some of the power issues and the...
Want to confirm that they can hear and see us?
Yeah, they're kind of...
Gone again.
Yeah.
Gone again.
I still see them here on this laptop, just so you know. So it's just this TV.
Can they hear us?
Can you tell if they can hear us?
HDMI.
I can hear you. Do you hear me?
Um, I'm gonna ask if he can hear us and see if he nods. Andy, can you hear us at all?
And they are nodding, but I guess, I guess you can't hear them.
There they go, they're back.
Be back for the moment. Andy, have you seen the PDF version of the plat?
Yes, I have. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. And do you agree that it has all the changes we repressed it?
Yes, peers too.
Okay, I think we're all in agreement then. Okay, good. So, that's that. Next, we have to go through our hearing procedure, which I can hardly remember. So we've got it written down. Open hearing by reading the warning. Don, review the order of events. Request disclosures of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications. Do we have any? Any conflicts here in the board?
Don't see any.
I'm gonna skip the review of the definition of interested persons, which means your neighbors, basically, or anybody that might have a party status here, because I don't see anyone in attendance. So this will be quick.
This will be good.
Yeah, I like that. If there's gonna be drama, I'd rather be with somebody else, not her.
Yeah, come any other month.
Yeah.
Well, here's our...
I was gonna say a lot around us is family, but I guess that could be just as bad sometimes.
Well, it's funny you should mention that. Your neighbor's not too far away. Old Turnpike sometimes has a different way of looking at family.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm gonna formally just ask if there's any interested parties that wish to be recognized. Hearing none. There are no interested parties present. We'll reflect that in the minutes. I invite an applicant or a representative of the applicants to take an oath. Which, I mean, I don't know, I guess you could all sort of do it. If you want to raise your hand and repeat after me. Is Hunter gonna do it too?
I'm not technically on the, the, as of now, so I'm not sure if I'm allowed.
An applicant on the...
Of interest.
Yeah, you're an applicant, you're part of the parties.
You're interested.
I hereby swear that the evidence...
I hereby swear that the evidence.
I give in the cause under consideration.
I give under the cause of consideration.
Shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For sworn in. We will accept any written statements or oral statements from the applicants, if you have any. It doesn't have to be, but if you wish to say anything in support.
I think we're good. Hunter's been dealing with this a lot since this whole process has started, so we just came with the new mylar and stuff. I think everything's gone.
You really want him for a neighbor, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Well, he's, he's out on an island in California right now.
I was wondering why it was in t-shirts.
He's in, he's in San Clemente Island, off of the coast of California.
And we can't all be lucky.
I know that.
Would you like some of this snow?
I know that.
It's cold here today, 59 degrees.
Oh, you're bull ragged. It was minus four when I got up.
Yeah, what are we, below 12 now?
Yeah, you're below that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just go over the application, because that's basically, since there's no other exhibits or testimony, do that, that I can just read, read off it? So, we have the wastewater permits recognized here. I'm not gonna read them all off, because we'll just, basically just copy them from the application into the, um, the record. Just gonna say that the application is complete, and we'll consider all the information on it in our decision. One of the things that we talked about, Hunter, we talked about, must have been in December, is the creek that's at the west, well, sort of northwest corner of the property. And one of the things that you said you might consider or talk with your family about is whether we can put some buffer around that, a development buffer. And one of the reasons we ask that is because it's actually in our, what do we call it, wetland and riparian, kind of no-development zone from our town plan maps. And that's partly for our river corridor protections, for flood protection. And that's basically just right up here in the corner. And I think, I don't know if you had that conversation, or if you want to address that now?
Sure, yeah. And I can't remember, is that buffer somewhere around 50 feet? I know when we were discussing it during the meeting, it was a relatively thin area, and I believe it may not even make it beyond the bank, or that sort of large, those two contours right there, if I remember correctly.
This whole area right here, from the river all the way up to the edge of this, this driveway here, it's, it's a, this is, it's all wooded here.
Yeah.
I don't, you're talking about, it's all wooded, natural, existing park.
Is that something you'd be amenable to keeping that way?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so just not like having, building things right next to the creek.
Pretty good bank right there.
Yes, there is.
It sort of lends itself to the... And that is one of these flood-prone areas here, that comes under this bridge, I guess.
Yes.
And it's also a wildlife corridor, as we've mapped in our town plan maps, that comes down to Mill River here. This is 103.
This is definitely, from the elevation, where we are up here, is, is the highest point, and then there's a really large drop-off down into the river. So it's, you know, uninhibited there. And this is, this is pretty flat here, and then it tapers up to Randy.
Randy's side, yeah.
Would Dawson be able to still build like his deck thing that he wanted?
He's, he's in a...
No, off the bank that he wanted, I don't know.
I think so. I mean, if he ever built a deck or something there, just overlooked the river or something, is that gonna be an issue, on his, he would go through?
Well, one of the, is that, is that something, maybe you can describe what it is you had in mind?
Well, this is nothing. It's, no, I would, I, no, it's not, it's nothing.
He'd have to be back X number of feet to build anything anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the, I think, from my review, Commissioner, please feel free to look at this. I just printed this off with the property, the very rough state boundaries on here. This is the property we're discussing, right here. And you can't really see it, it's because it's covered by the arrows, but the red line is that, which is this, you can see the sort of job here, is this one. So it's like that. A lot of this area is actually in the Hawkins property.
Yeah, most of it is. We just have this one little, this one little kick right there.
And then down here, there's a bit more, at least, of the way that it's mapped here.
Yeah, it doesn't go back on other property.
It creates itself.
Yes, it creates itself, but yeah, maybe your flood plain.
Right.
Yes.
And one thing we discussed at one of the earlier meetings, I'm not sure, is whether you had the intention of, of developing this southern corner.
No.
Okay. Because that right now is in this conserved area. This kind of adds this sort of buffer around the connection across 103.
Yeah, this is, this down here is so wet and very thick with block and spruce, and it's just, it's, it's pretty, you know...
Good for hunting and stuff.
Yes, exactly.
Good hunting area, that's about it.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what we're interested to keep.
Yeah, for sure.
It looks like the dry, you know, you're in the right spot where the dry, buildable areas up here.
For sure.
I think we got a good trade-off, if you guys are amenable to keeping this wild for, for game, and doing your stuff up there. I think we're in good shape. Does anybody have any thoughts?
They're fine on that.
Yeah.
It'd be as simple as just saying, just comply with the wetlands, right, which is 50 feet, I think.
Well, one way is to just say, as it's mapped.
Put it instead of what the current map is, because if it ever changes and it encroaches more of their property.
We'd want to keep it where it is. That's what I'm trying to discuss, so, yeah.
Yeah, it would be into a, where it'd take more of a property, yeah. The map at this time, or something like you said.
But the date that it was approved last year, something like that.
Or if you felt like the area northwest of the stream, right, isn't that area here? You said the red lines, the stream, where's the red line?
Yeah, well, I gotta, it's underneath the arrow too, a little teeny bit, but we can, we're gonna, we'll come up with the right language for it, but it sounds like we're on the same page. I, at least to my eye, that's, the rest of it is pretty cut and dry. Does anybody have any questions?
You don't see any problems with it.
Andy, you have any questions for the applicants?
Uh, no, I think, uh, just to make sure, doubly sure, that we're all on the same page, we've, there are a couple of different maps here. One is the riparian area, and the other is forest land and conserved area. And I can't really tell from, you know, by comparison of the lot plan and the maps, exactly where they overlap. And they may not overlap at all along, but they seem like they might, along that sort of western and southern end of the lot there. And I just think, uh, I want to make sure we're all clear that we're not just talking about the stream bed, but we're not talking about much more than that, because I don't want anyone to, you know, be surprised by it.
No, that, if you're talking about the, the buffer you're talking along the river area and down, as the river is what you're talking about now, and...
Yeah, I think the map that John was showing, shows both the, uh, stream bed and the buffer around it, and also a sort of pale green area that's, uh, designated for forest and conservation purposes. And it doesn't, I mean, I...
So he's just referring to, there's actually two different things in the town plan, the most restrictive being the wetlands, which is still state-protected and protected by this, the hashed area here. And then the other area is this other area, which is probably still wet, but it's not, not the river.
Exactly. I just wanted to make sure we understood each other.
Okay. The hatchmark blue, or the light blue color, I guess is the question being asked.
So if you were to superimpose this onto this, I mean, this is, Dawson's primary residence is here, right?
Yep.
Which is a long way from here.
It's all, that's all in the clear here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, nobody's ever been...
This, the most restrictive being the wetland areas, which are both the last two and river corridor, as you said, I think...
The rivers.
It's basically the bed of the stream.
Yes. And that probably gets even, that gets away from our property, because our property, Dawson's, are here. It goes down, there's a wicked slope down through here from our property.
I think if anything, the buffer area probably just clips the bottom, but the other area is a little bit wider, and that's this green, which probably, I mean, look, there's your, your drive. It's probably not even here, because you can see this part comes in here. Actually, it's probably just like, like this edge, and that's the part you, I think you said is pretty wet down here. And that's where we're thinking about forests for, for hunting. I mean, you know, it wouldn't stop you from logging it, hunting. You'd be able to do everything you do today and all that.
Yeah, you're never gonna see anything more than, you know, the septic water, you know, just what we have up here.
Yep, okay. Okay, cool.
What would be the, for the wildlife corridor, what would be the, the distance? In other words, when we're doing the wetlands, it's 50 feet.
Well, in this area, I think it's, you know, would say as it was mapped to the town plan.
In the town plan, on X date.
Yeah, the existing, the existing map, not like some future map.
Yeah, right. But they may like to know, you know, how big the corridor is. That's all I'm...
Yeah, yeah.
In other words.
We'll come up with something in our decision and make sure it's clear.
Can I just take a pretend to talk, Hunter?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I mean, before they, I'm just thinking, before they agree to something, they should know what's, they're basically the space or the size they're, you know, agreeing to. That's all.
All that, all that whole territory right there is wildlife corridor.
Yeah.
They travel through, they're pretty regular.
I wish there, I wish there were more, more here.
But yeah, the two, three feet of snow kind of keeps them a little bit away.
Yeah, yeah.
That, I think, is like the only, only thing I had to ask, so I think everything else is pretty clear. I mean, anybody else have any other questions?
I just have one question. If this will all be completed before the taxes come out, so that it's divided at this time, at that time, or no?
We have, I believe, 45 days to write our decision. And then if it's approved, you will be asked to sign it, and we will sign the plat. It'll be then official and recorded. So I don't know what, what exact, what is the exact date you're hoping for? We can try to work with you on the date, but...
Well, I mean, just before all the tax, taxes come out, to have it divided this year.
That would be like April, May?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's just Dawson, Dawson's his primary residence, so he gets the higher tax rate, and then he doesn't get to write, you know, he doesn't, what can he do, depreciate it, or, you know, because it's all in everybody's name, right? It's all one parcel of property. So the 22 acres will eventually, you know, be just strictly Dawson's, and it'll be, that's all she's, I think she's asking, is that Dawson will have his own taxes.
I think the timing works out that that would be before taxes. April 1st is when they draw over, right?
Something like that.
Yeah, you have to read that by one, but that's well after 45 days, right?
Well, no, April 1st is, because it's the 19th of February, it's, um...
Well, let's do this.
Forty-three days.
We'll do it one step at a time here. We have any other questions for them?
I don't.
Okay, so I'll answer your question a little bit differently, because we have to set, we can't do anything until we have our decision, but we, we can try to get that done as soon as possible. I don't think there's gonna be much difficulty with it. So while we still have the hearing open, what do we think about timing of meeting for deliberation, to write our decision? Like, uh...
I'm open.
Next week?
How long do we have to wait? Let's put it that way.
Wouldn't have to wait at all.
Yeah.
I can't do it today. What's the next one? Next week's a little tricky for me. We tried the first March, um, I don't think that'll interfere. If we did like March, Wednesday, March 5th, that wouldn't interfere with any town meeting stuff, right? Would it? Because it's all Monday and Tuesday, right?
I don't think that works.
See anybody else? Calendar over here. I don't know how this is updated.
You got February. Oh, is your calendar?
Yeah, okay. Well, I would say, let's try to do, that way we can have something put together for the basic framework for March 5th. Does that sound good?
That's a little better.
Sorry, are you, are you proposing we meet on the 5th? Is that what you're saying, John?
I'm proposing we meet for a deliberative, deliberative session to write our decision, or at least agree on it. Which is a closed meeting, where we actually just do the work.
And then we issue our decision on a regular meeting? Or you, we can mail it to them?
I don't think it needs to wait till the meeting. I think, yeah, people can send it out. So theoretically, we could have a decision by the end of March 5th. That would work for you, I think. And then if you could, you know, if it's approved, sign it, and then we can get the plat recorded, basically, the next week, I would say.
As far as you guys are concerned, everything's pretty good, though, right? Everything's...
It looks nice.
Everything seems in order, and you know, we've discussed the only little tricky bit, and I think it's, we've got an agreement on that. I think we're, I mean, we're gonna decide together, but... Yeah. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, as long as you're happy with the terminology.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and there, I mean, I don't know if, you know, if that map were more detailed, with the, if there is some kind of, if you could overlay it almost, and, you know, like...
As we speak, I'm geo-referencing that picture you just took in QGIF, on some satellite imagery, and I can send that to you guys, just to confirm that it looks good.
He can do that.
I can.
Yeah, my skill set.
John, I'm available on the 5th, except that I might have a conflict in the evening, so I'm not sure what time you're thinking about for a deliberative session that day.
Probably evening.
March 5th at Ash Wednesday, by the way. Don't think it matters to me, but...
My daughter hasn't danced before, so...
I have to get everybody scheduled to coincide.
Well, it's a closed meeting, right?
Yeah.
Could we do it via Zoom? I'm just suggesting.
Well, your, your conflict would, I mean, Andy, your conflict wouldn't allow Zoom, right? You're Zoom regardless.
Well, depending on the time, it might make it, well, I'm, that's right, I'm Zoom regardless, but I, I don't want to prejudge anything, but I don't imagine it's gonna be a very long meeting. So it's just really a question of what time.
If you back it up to 5, would that work for him?
No, no, not me.
John, John, what time would you be available that day? What's the...
It's so bad, yeah, that would be like 6:30. So she does her dance down there, Broward Borough, until 5.
Yeah, I mean, 6:30, your time is 5:30 my time, so that's, that would be fine.
6:30 would work?
Here, 5:30.
Six this.
Just keep one hour.
I could, I could do 6:30 Eastern.
Right, right. That would work for me. Because it works for everybody else.
Works for me.
Actually, you're not allowed. You're not allowed.
I'm not allowed.
I forgot. All right, I'll have to do the darn Zoom, I guess. All right.
I almost had it set up before Peter arrived, so...
Oh, you're hired. Conservation Commission, I guess, got trained on it too, so...
I think so, yeah.
All right. So I think we should, it's a long answer to your question. I think we should be able to work with you on the date.
Perfect, thank you.
Let's see where we are. I think that's pretty much it, because we're ready for a regular meeting. I just lost.
Is anybody else short for the regular meeting? Is it just you guys for the next meeting, the regular meeting?
It is today, I think, yeah. You're welcome to stay, but I, you know, if I were you, I'd...
I'll, I'll read, I'll read the chit chat.
Um, let's see here, I just gotta close it. So, um...
So that's, that's staying with you.
That's my...
You got it?
With that, with no other comments from the Commissioner or other questions, I will close the hearing, and we will enter a deliberative session on the proposed subdivision. And we will meet again to finish our deliberation, hopefully finish on March 5th.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Take care.
We're not sure we like him, because he's in too much of warm weather.
I know. He's out there on that, it's like San Clemente, it's owned by the Navy. It's a, what is it, 50, 80-something miles off the coast of California, huh?
About 70 miles off the coast of San Diego, yeah.
Kind of neat.
The way we look at it, the Navy is just a bunch of bus drivers transporting the military.
He's responsible for all their critters, conservation biology out there, all birds and things like that. He keeps making sure they're all good.
Awesome. Someone just sent me a proposed book. He went to the North Pole on the Coast Guard, Carter Healy, back in September. And he's putting a book together.
Oh, nice.
Got it all proposed online.
Oh, so you got it before it goes out, huh?
He wants money.
There you go. He needs an investor, needs some support.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, 7:03, I'll call a regular meeting to order. I'm not highly planning a commission for Wednesday, February 19th. First order of business, any changes to the agenda? Let's see. I don't think I have anything. Anybody else? Nope, okay. Uh, we have a set of minutes that I don't think I've seen, but has anybody else seen?
Oh, yeah, the minutes from January 15th.
Yeah, look, I missed them this time.
Looked good to me, but I'm only one that run, you guys.
Apologies, my travel schedule got so messed up.
Yeah, I think this, this last month was a little crazy for a lot of people. This is, oh, this is the one.
It's right here. I have on my computer.
So in the minutes, did we attach the resolution?
I didn't attach it to the minutes, but it will be in, in the electronic record.
Okay, well, let's, let's just consider them attached to the minutes, so. Other thing, I, I didn't, I want to gently remind you to put the minutes on the drive too.
Yeah.
I know it's, it's a bit of a pain in the neck, but just that way, that's the sort of more permanent record if you lose the website or whatever.
Yes.
For whatever reason, which, you know, it's WordPress, so who knows?
No, I acknowledge I'm slightly behind on.
Yeah, no.
Getting everything in the drive.
Yeah, that's okay. The main thing is that we had, let's see, does it save me? Okay, yeah, that's the big one, is the resolution was approved and so I would. So we can attach the resolution here. That would be the only change I think I have. Do you even have anything?
I haven't had.
If you could.
If you want to attach.
Send an electronic version, an editable electronic version, because you made that strikeout change.
Yeah, I signed the, can you scan in the one I signed?
I scanned in that one.
So that's.
I don't have the technology to attach PDF to a PDF in a single document.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I can just post.
You do. You just drag it and preview. But anyway, if you send me both, it's, you could do it in Acrobat or in preview. You have Mac? No, you don't have Mac?
No, I don't have Acrobat.
Okay.
I have some. Let me see if I can.
Send them both to me and I'll put them together into one document. Okay. I don't know Windows that well, so. Okay, so I would, I'll move that. We approved the minutes with the one change that will attach to the resolution as signed and adopted.
I'll sign that.
Motion to adjourn second to any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay, minutes are approved with the change. Thank you. Hey, do you have anything?
Yes, BCR from Hyde and Frau Hammer on Tiffany Road for a four bedroom manufactured home. There is a wastewater permit already issued. And then the other thing is to alert you to the fact that I've now received from Marvin Patch the formal flood hazard area permit application. I've only just received it. I'm reviewing it right now and hopefully I'm going to have, I'm going to have a discussion with him this week and also discuss with Carl Medash just to make sure that everything is, is in order to present it to you. I've sent the BLA decision along with the resolution to Alyssa Cronet and Evan Page with instructions for one of them, Alyssa presumably, to get everything recorded. And I've also followed up with Dean Armstrong regarding the camper on Tarvinville Road. I had to send a letter. I don't have any other contact details. I haven't heard anything back yet. I have still to contact the new owners of the Blue Spruce. It is not the owners of the McClellan place, it's the people who are renting there. Charles and Savannah Baker. I have seen on social media that they may be trying to reopen it as some sort of venue. I'm not quite sure.
Well, you ain't gonna open it for a while.
Yeah, so I will alert them to the fact that it is the, almost the entirety of the property is in a river corridor and a large portion is in the flood hazard area. And that they need to bear this in mind before considering any work.
They're, they're living there, so.
Yes, I mean, I'm not sure that you can.
I, I'm surprised, I'm surprised they got no gate to live there.
Well, I'm not sure who would tell them that they can't, yeah.
Well, it was condemned.
It's a public, it's, it's at least, it's still, it's still a paper public building. So I believe occupancy would require approval of the fire marshal at minimum.
Okay. I didn't realize it was still, that it was a public building.
I think it's always been. I don't think they ever formally changed it.
Okay.
Um, it's also probably still under Act 250 jurisdiction, which is something we should probably check as well.
All the buildings were part of the public.
Yeah, it was one, all one property. I mean, it was a.
It was all one property.
It's a momentarily, okay.
There, there's three sections, but it's all one property. That's what I was wondering.
I then may need to get some information on who's condemned it and how that information was recorded.
Fire marshal.
Oh.
My name, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a, there's a few of them.
Because I know the day it was condemned, I think there was three of them there.
Yeah, they sort of work.
This was after the fire, presumably.
Yeah, they sort of work in teams.
Oh, there's probably a.
Department of Public Safety. It's all under Department of Public Safety, I believe.
It would be either, either of us, I think it's out of Rowland.
I think it is the Rowland ones.
Yeah.
There's some in Springfield. I don't think they come as far.
Well, they do.
Yeah.
They do overlap sometimes. Because I know, I know we had some trouble once before with them overlapping. And created some problems.
Yeah, I think one comes out of Chester, actually, I think.
Okay, I will make inquiries and.
I mean, I hate to rain on their parade, parade, because they seem like a nice couple. But.
Was that sold off market? Was that listed?
No.
It wasn't listed.
So I mean.
I, I wouldn't have known that was sold if I hadn't opened them.
I mean, if, if, I don't think a Realtor would have, like a reputable Realtor would have actually sold that place, but not without lots of disclosures.
Apparently, as I understand it, the previous owner, who is a lawyer, I believe, accompanied, accompanied the current owners into the town office to do the recording.
Of the dean, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I will follow up. You had asked me at the last meeting just to do some checking on how many towns have no zoning. According to the zoning atlas of Vermont, 55 towns.
There's a zoning atlas of Vermont.
It's part of a larger nationwide zoning atlas project. According to that, 55 towns have no zoning.
Who would have thought that many?
Including six cities in Marin County. I haven't verified them yet.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be, it's a very.
It's amazing how many towns don't have zoning.
Well, you know, some are barely towns. Mount Tamer is not surprising at all.
But if.
I don't know, Tamer's pretty close to Biggs now, Holly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
It's got four people living there.
But if, if.
I want to see.
Well, then it gets Mount Tamer, it's just all people. They're fine.
I mean, this was in relation, I think, to the subdivision, the subdivision regulations.
Right. Can I take this?
Yeah, yeah. We know that Cavendish is working on it. We don't know if any of the others in Marin County are, but it might be a possibility.
Cavendish was up, they remember Windsor.
Yeah, so I know this isn't quite right because it doesn't have, I'm pretty sure Rowland's, Rowland Town does not have zoning, I think.
Yeah.
I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, it's not Rowland.
Rowland Town? Yeah, maybe. I thought they were in the same boat, but. But thank you for that.
As I say, I haven't verified all that information. I think that was it. The subdivision list, I'm working on it, but I was just waiting until this current subdivision is completed and I'll just upload it as a PDF again onto the drive or as an Excel sheet.
Oh, what I asked you to do for the, oh, I need, I need that for the housing study.
Oh, right, okay, I'll.
Yeah, if you can just.
Send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, we could put in this one that's pending or something.
Yeah.
Thank you. I had a question. I think there was, did we have a question several months ago about what's happening on Sawyer Hill Road? Did that come up?
I think the thing that came up was that there's ever increasing building going on there.
Yeah, was it all permitted for, or registered?
Now, is which building, the one down on the corner on the first par?
First, lower par.
Okay, I know which one you're talking about now.
It came up, I don't, I don't know what you think of, I haven't looked into it at all. I don't know anything about it.
It was a BCR.
Oh, we did get a BCR for it.
Yeah. I did go and look at it at one point because I couldn't fully understand what the purpose of the instruction.
What, four, four or five heat pumps hooked to it?
Yeah, the, the BCR, if I recall correctly, said it was for storage or a garage or something like that. So.
Could you, could you describe a little more where this is located? Because Sawyer Hill Road is my road, more or less.
Yeah, it's within, I don't know, first couple of hundred meters, yards of the, of 103 on the left hand side as you're going up.
Right at that bed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right on that corner. Right on that first big corner.
Yeah, I mean, the BCR was probably early last year, early sort of, sort of late.
Early, early summer, early spring.
Yeah.
The other question I had was did we get a BCR for, I'm not sure what exactly is happening, but on the left side as you're going west down on 103, down just past Sawyer Hill, you know, the, the three lane area there, there looks like, is that a new house going in? Or are they rebuilding the house?
And they don't, they, they took the old house down, put a new one in its place.
Did you get one for that? I think so, basically, yeah, the kind.
It's where the firewood business is.
Right, right.
Oh, his wife is a real estate broker. I can't think of her name. She had.
Oh.
Oh, used to be, worked for Kelly.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I know who you're talking about, but I'm sorry, the name is scary.
Uh, I think I'm.
As you would come out from Heelville Road and up the three lanes, it's the one, two, I think it's the third driveway on the line.
I think it is third, yeah.
As you're going up the hill towards the road.
It kind of sits back off, well, there's a little firewood pile or log pile that you can.
You can just see all the, you know, the tuck back mounds, or at least it was that way last week, or a couple weeks ago.
Okay, I'll double check.
I don't think they changed the foundation. I think they just took the old house down and reframed around foundation.
Yeah, but still, right.
I think that probably.
More than a hundred bucks. Thousand bucks worth of work.
Twenty-five.
Yeah? All right, so let's see, is, I think that wraps it up, right?
I don't remember.
Uh, what do I have? Nothing that's already on the agenda. I have the Act 250. Oh, I did want to just throw out there, one of the things that we had agreed on two years ago was that everybody take at least one training class through the year.
I did a Zoom training for my order through the state of Vermont. That worked for the state.
All right, I, I think we could probably accept that.
It was an open meeting rules, rules, regulations, because all of them.
Okay.
Because all of our meetings are recorded in there. You gotta go into Polar Carders.
Yep, okay, there you go. Anybody else want to think about what they want to take and the town, you know, pays for that.
I, I've still got them all listed in the computer. I just haven't, haven't had time to get into it.
Yeah.
I took the same one you took.
Last year.
No, last month. The one you talked.
Oh, with the wastewater one, that one?
Yeah.
Wastewater Systems.
But I gotta, but I gotta take the other one for the open meeting law. So I'll put you that as soon as I remember to do it.
Yeah.
It's the best site to get those on, if I don't know what we're through that.
The LCT has most of those trained. And you're all entitled to get, you know, logins there because you're all commissioners. So I think that's it. I don't think we had any other emails, did I? Okay, let's jump, I don't have any other reports. Well, I can get to that. I sent around the notice from the Act 250 board that the Gero subdivision has been, they have gotten enough information to move forward. There is a proposed permit. I haven't read it carefully. I briefly just looked at it, but I think the actual thing for us tonight is, do we want to have a hearing or do we want to ask Act 250 to have a hearing? And I don't think we, you know, need to have like a big compelling reason for a hearing. I think the reason they don't automatically do hearings is just because if really no one is, you know, paying attention, then what's the point? But considering how this has been a little bit contentious, I'm inclined to ask the state to have a hearing on it just so that it's all basically on the record and it actually frankly give us a kind of an opportunity to see how that all works, which I mean, I don't know if you had, in your tenure, you had any of the Act 250 hearings?
No, we didn't, we didn't run into any of that.
Yeah, so I think it might be interesting to see how it goes, you know, theoretically, it's pretty straightforward because it's just a subdivision. It's not a development project per se.
I think the only thing I saw when reading is they asked that the road by the weapons be moved on the map and the stone fences have to be.
Finger nailed.
Now, the, yeah, something with the state.
Well, yeah. Okay.
Archaeology.
Yeah, that's something that we.
But that's nothing we do, but.
Well, we, we have the opportunity to either put our support behind any of those things or not. We do have a provision in the town plan that says we should, you know, stone walls should be preserved and I know at our hearing, a number of museum folks felt very strongly about that. So I'm, I'm inclined to, you know, discuss it, but I'm inclined to ask the state to have a hearing just so that we can.
See how they do it.
See how it all works and make sure that, you know, we, we did have some buggers who felt very strongly about certain issues. I think the hearing would allow us the opportunity to make sure that those things are going to be.
And it would allow the normans to have their. And would allow the Normans to have their concerns covered.
Well, I think they, I think they could be part of it too, yeah, they're buggers.
I think that the.
We could also represent their interests there, I think, so.
It's my understanding that there has been some agreement amongst all the parties about where the access would be, including.
Right, so this will give us a chance to hear that.
Involving the roads.
Did they figure out their property situation, real life?
Well, it should be, it's all those things. I think this would be an opportunity. I think it would be better to have a discussion under the, this sort of.
See, the big thing that was involved there is there's a water well for the firm in that swamp area.
Right.
And now that was their biggest concern is that a road didn't get put over the top of that well.
Right.
Otherwise, I don't think they cared.
Yeah. And when they repaired where the access was.
Yeah, that's probably the issue that hasn't been resolved informally at least.
Yeah, but not in front of us, but.
Yeah, no, they didn't want to cut the, the road cutting the, I'm gonna call it the pipe from that.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't necessarily cut it.
Right, go over the top of the well.
Yeah, but if it's not deep enough down, you've got a frozen pipe every time you turn around.
Yeah, so I think, I think there's enough interest here to justify asking for it.
Yes, Andy?
I was just gonna say, my understanding is that, and this may be another reason to ask for the hearing, but my understanding is that the way this permit is written, they can't do anything in that wetland area without returning to the state and getting a wetland permit. So they may have reached some kind of agreement amongst themselves, but they'll still have to go back to the state if and when they want to actually construct anything and get a permit to go across that wetland. And the state may have something, or will have something to say about where that access is. So I think that may be another reason to ask for a hearing so that if there's any inconsistency between what the state might allow and what the parties have agreed to amongst themselves, they can at least know that sooner rather than later.
I'd be surprised if the state allowed them to go across that wetlands anyway.
The way it's written, you can't cut trees, you can't do this, you can't do that. I mean, it's got a whole list of things you can't do.
Right, well, what they, what they'd have to do is go, if they want to have access anywhere along there, it would go through the wetland. And to be able to do that, they'd have to amend that permit. And I think the state, as I understand it, would not want to essentially land lock a piece of property. So they probably would allow some kind of access, but it would be one that's does the least amount of harm to the wetlands. So it might be where that existing access road is next to the barn, just for example. But I just, I mean, all this is, just confirms my view that it's a good idea to see what the state has to say on all that so that because, because I think it could be problematic if the, the parties think they have an agreement and then find out when time actually comes to do something that the state doesn't allow.
I think it could become a real hornet's nest real easy.
Well, I think having those discussions under the, in the context of Act 250 is preferable to having them here.
Agree, yeah.
Considering the way that whole situation went down and the kind of accusations that were flying, I think it's better to have the state being nanny or mediator or whatever.
Right, 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 right.
Another one that we kind of, I think last year we briefly talked about is one thing that it would be interesting to see if the state has can put any input on is whether we can salvage that fire pond.
Which one?
The one on Robert Garrow's property. The old bit's now decommissioned, but I have it under pretty good authority that there's still some pretty good, you know, wetness there that if it were dredged out.
You figure you've got that whole swamp back there to feed it.
So, you know, there's some value. I'm no longer on the fire department, but I believe there's probably some interest in having a fire pond in that area.
Well, it would be good for, for the people that live right there, yeah.
And I mean, you know, bonfires are nothing to sneeze at, so.
Oh, they're, they're a big deal.
So having a fire pond near a farm is, is something I think is in the realm of public safety, so. That is, public safety is something that's in Act 250's jurisdiction, so.
But you probably, probably have to go through Mr. Garrow.
Well, you know, this whole point is to sell this thing. So, you know, anyway, it might be worth having.
A fire, a fire pond might help itself, too.
Yeah, so, okay, so.
They could say that it's within 500 feet of the property.
I'll make a motion that we. The regional, Rollin Regional, having a commission for assistance on this. And they were tied up, I think they're still tying up the end of the regional plan. Which I think I shared with all of you, right? They have this regional plan that they're working on. I think they have a draft out now. So I think as soon as they get past that, they're hopefully gonna have some resources to help us out. I think I'll take this and probably look at these towns and see if they have regulations done in the last five years, anything before that, I think probably. History, history, kind of knowledge different from where. That's about it I have for now. I don't know if anybody else has done any research on it, looked into it. Yeah.
Now, there's one piece of a dome out there I guess has changed its situation there at the store.
With, well, with respect to the regulation changes?
Well.
Were you just talking about something else?
The piece of property out back. Seems they are in the process of buying.
It is already being transferred.
What is?
Andy Ballack.
And they belong, 6.9 acres has been purchased by Mr. Prudential.
Oh, that's a, it's a former.
Buy all the property.
Makes sense. If you think about it, it makes sense for them.
So, okay, well, so this, let's just add this as, this probably should have been a different agenda. Okay, so one thing at a time. So let's, let's pause that for a moment. Andy, do you have anything else on subdivisions? I know you've kind of informally been looking around at some other regs, but I don't think we really have too much this month, right? Okay.
No, I'm pretty down though.
Okay, so I have a couple of things I'll continue to look on for, we're just gonna keep this rolling every month. All right, so let's, let's dig something in. We can call public comments, I guess. Let's go. Status of the store, we'll call it. So I'm hearing that Andy Ballack has sold his meadow to Alyssa Kroner. So.
Surprise if it didn't hurt me.
So that, that now triggers Act 250?
Maybe not, because it's not in the store's name.
It's still his name.
It does not matter.
Yeah, but there is the question. According to both Quinn Mann and the email I received from Alyssa, they are, they have both said that Act 250 will only be triggered if there is some development, land development, maybe purchasing it.
There is development at the store.
Yeah, I.
I, so.
The thing is, having that being part of the discussion between Alyssa and Quinn Mann, we don't know exactly how.
Right, I, I think that it's a trigger now, but we will have to ask Quinn. I'll see color.
It'll be interesting.
Every month, something different.
I'm just, you know, maybe I'm being crazy, but if it's in her name and Kiwi's name, she just, I'm gonna say.
These, yeah, the shell games still don't matter, yeah.
Okay, I'm just.
So the, based on the conversations that I've had with the state, the reason it wasn't triggering yet is because they weren't over the one acre threshold. Even though there is active commercial development and construction, et cetera, happening at the store, the combination of the family's lots wasn't over the acre. And that was only because the parents' place didn't have any construction work or activity on it. Song's property does, which has no project activity, your place, store does. That's around to half an acre or so, roughly, over the acre threshold. But now with one party having six acres in commercial lumber, I don't know. I think it would be very hard for them to say that the threshold hasn't been.
Even though it's not the same entity.
Yeah, it's a, it's a different ownership listing.
Yeah, it's the same owner. So even, even the, even the family numbers, it doesn't matter. It's different sort of, it's all connected.
Be interesting to find out.
It's gonna be an interesting discussion. I'm just trying, I guess.
They're very well aware that they're trying to play those games to get over review. And it's inevitable. It seems really dumb to me. I think I basically said this to them, to play these games. You're gonna need Act 250 review. You may as well just start the process. And that's my understanding of what Quinn said to them as well, so.
My understanding of the father is better to act or pass or forgive this after I've done it.
Oh, he's so wrong.
I, I, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying that's.
He's been playing that game with the town here for years.
Yes, right. And I remember the whole thing with the property across from the 40th where they have that.
That, that property gets undivided so many times, after a while we're losing track of who won what.
All right, so we'll, we'll follow up once again. It's like a make more work for us situation. So yet again, we have a new month and a different situation on the ground. That is different from what they told us here in person.
I mean, this, this information was shared today with me by Carol based on her receiving property type transfer form. So I, I mean, I don't know whether somehow they came across small money.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the representation that was given to us was they had no immediate plans to acquire that law?
Uh, well, the way it was presented was that they didn't have sufficient funds to acquire.
Okay, so anyway, the games continue. And it's, it's not a great way to go to.
Yeah, it's sort of pushing the envelope all the time.
Anyhow, I think we're at the end of the agenda. Does anybody have any last thoughts?
Next meeting.
Next meeting is the 5th for deliberation and the 19th for a regular meeting. Is that right?
Yes. There is a possibility I won't be here on the 19th. If I'm not here, I'll be in New York, so I can.
Okay.
And from that, and emerge me, the 5th is what time?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Here. For local folks, yeah.
For local folks, who's that?
The local view. We'll get on Zoom for Andy or someone else.
Well, I don't know.
All right. Is it six months, one day up yet?
Seven forty.